Fix something bang on it.
The office phones are always.
And turn on your neck goes there.
What?
Happy day, okay, I thought in my like, yeah, I'm showing my age here. Happy days.
You wanna get these glasses?
I did bring the right glasses today.
Good evening, Washington courthouse, it is seven thirty P M. on Monday, November twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, time for our second regular meeting of the month. At this time, Mr. Blair will offer the invocation and subbing for Mrs. Call. Kelly will lead us in the pledge if you will sustain.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight as a group of council people that are entrusted with taking care of the needs of the city. We thank you, your Father, for all the gifts you've given into our community. We know, your Father, that all the good gifts come from you. Now, as we prepare to enter this week of Thanksgiving, I'm sure we could all find something to be thankful for. And I'm thankful for my family and for my friends and for all the things that have made my life what it is today. So tonight, Father, as we come before you with the city's business, we ask your blessing upon it. May you give us wisdom and understanding to make the right decisions. And for all these things, we will give you praise in your son, Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Will please join me in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim and Kelly.
Yes, sir.
You got it right, Kelly, didn't you? Roll call.
Schultz.
Yeah, here.
That's okay. Blair.
Here.
Call. Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lynch.
Here.
I'll move that we excuse Mrs. Call.
Second.
She has the flu, so better home than with us.
No, yes.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. We have two sets of minutes. The first is from our regular meeting on November twelfth, twenty twenty five. Any changes we need to make there?
I didn't see any, I guess.
Not someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept these minutes as printed.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Next is our budget work session on November nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Any changes there?
Um, since I have to abstain on the budget every year, I did not indicate yea at the end. I abstained in that as well.
Okay.
I will move up here.
I do. Minutes work session.
Behind you.
Oh, here we go. I will move that we accept these as printed. You know, I may.
I'm gonna ask what the amendment.
We'll take care of it.
All right, thank you.
Yes. Okay. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Okay, any communication, Mr. Denon?
None.
We have Service Safety and Recreation Committee report from Mr. Hawk.
The Service Safety and Recreation Committee met in the council chambers located at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty five, at six thirty P M. Mr. Ted Hawk presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Christman, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Steve Schultz, council member, Mr. Jim Blair, council member, Mrs. Sylvia Call, council member, Mr. Dale Lynch, council chairperson, Mr. Gary Dean, service director, Mr. Tim Downing, fire chief, Mr. Jeff Fenari, police chief, Mr. Mark Pistick, city attorney, and Mr. Joe Denon, city manager. Number one, Chief Downing presented a copy of the I S O rating public protection classification report for the fire department. Number two, the administration noticed the noted the police department's increased focus on traffic enforcement that had been completed. Chief Fenari noted several driving infractions, including speeding, no operator's license, two O V I, and distracted driving. Number three, Chief Fenari updated the committee on the L P R cameras at intersections within the city. Chief Fenari noted that cameras are being used for investigations and drug interdiction and not for the issuance of violations. Number four, Chief Fenari advised the committee that Caden Schultz had been hired for the open police patrol position and that his serving in would be held on November twenty first at the municipal court. Number five, Chief Fenari noted Ms. Ms. Schimmel's graduation date from the Ohio State Patrol Academy on January sixteen, twenty twenty six. Number six, the committee noted that the street department was preparing for the colder months. Number seven, Mr. Gary Dean advised the committee that multiple projects were completed within the city, including brush chipping, mowing, and street sweeping. Number eight, Mr. Dean noted that the water levels were good in the reservoir. Number nine, the administration advised the committee of upcoming repairs that will be completed to a sewer line near the Walmart retention pod. The committee noted a main break repair on U S Route twenty-two near Jamison Road and Dayton Avenue. Number eleven, the administration noted work that was completed at the cemetery in preparation for the Fayette County Historical Society tour that was held on October fourth, twenty twenty five. Number twelve, the committee noted new Space Force flags installed at Washington Cemetery. Number thirteen, the administration noted that Aaron Arnold had been hired to fill the secretary position at the cemetery upon the retirement of Nancy Stillings. Number fourteen, the committee recommended Harmony Gate to serve on the Children's Family First Board. Number fifteen, the committee noted an open position on the Board of Tax Review. Respectfully submitted, Mr. Ted Hawk, Chairperson, Service Safety and Recreation Committee, Mrs. Kelly Ford, Recording Secretary. And if anybody's interested, the reason I read this so well, Kelly fixed me a good cup of coffee. It's, what is it, carmo Carmen chip milliato?
Carmo macchiato.
Carmo macchiato, and so I am.
You're all shored up, it sounds like.
So there you have.
Hold on.
Does anybody have any questions about that?
About the coffee or about the?
Uh, about the report.
Okay.
If not, does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept it as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Mr. Denon, your report, sir.
Thank you, we're very pleased to have with us tonight Kristy from the Chamber of Commerce, which is the folks that do a tremendous amount of work with the Christmas parade. And anything to say about Operation Christmas, Kristy?
Um, it's moving along, December seventh, three o'clock, same route.
December seventh, we will block off Main Street from the intersection at Court to the alley to accommodate, oh, uh, where they announced it'll be for the Christmas parade and that type of practical issues. Uh, but we'll do that at nine so that they can get set up and, um, take care of that. J T Moore was a very dedicated police dispatcher. An extraordinarily kind person. And perhaps one of the most reliable people I could ever imagine. Unfortunately, he unexpectedly passed away and would like to convey condolences to his mother and his family. J T, it will be difficult to replace in just an exceptionally pleasant person. And it's a very, very sad day. The twenty twenty six budget, uh, would like to thank everyone that participated in the budget workshop. And I have a condensed version, uh, of the letter. And I'm gonna spare everybody it being read verbatim. Income taxes, you know, can be impacted in a positive or negative way by events in the real world. Now, Washington courthouse, it doesn't necessarily follow with national news. Okay, you can have results because of local conditions that are different than regional or national conditions that isn't at all abnormal. We've been very lucky in the past several years with a lot of work, uh, you know, that they look quite good. Now, utility revenues, water and sewer, the biggest factor there are large users of water and sewer, like folks in the industrial part. And if there's process changes, if there's changes to their businesses, that has a quite clear and immediate impact. And then you can have, uh, revenues influenced in utilities by the weather. If you get into an extremely dry phase, you know, people will tend to use more water. If you get into drought conditions, uh, then you can have an adverse effect on the expense side also. But those events, you know, they influence that projection that that we do for you on the revenue side of the budget. I think we gave you a revenue report at the budget workshop, which shows you kinda how well we did with the educated, uh, projection about what the the future will be. And income taxes, we're usually pretty good about that. Now, other sources of revenue become a little bit more problematic. And some of them, like income taxes, come in during the course of the year, and others, like the little bit of property tax income that you do get, and I wanna stress little, uh, cause overwhelmingly that benefits the school district, is basically twice a year. You do have a couple other smaller settlements for manufactured homes and so forth. I think technically you get up to four. But you get the two largest ones, uh, for what we think of as as typical property, twice a year. The industrial side is is stable. Uh, you know, we talked about it a bit in committee. What's disturbing is how uniform it is between businesses. They talk about that they've got a core workforce that that does great, but they have about ten percent of that workforce in a state of transition. You know, we have difficulty, uh, finding people, and there's a high degree of turnover, they're they're not there very long. That should vary from business to business based on, oh, shift and what you're doing and pay and benefits. But what is interesting is that that is very consistent between employers and the industrial part. They tell basically the same story regardless of what they do, regardless of their pay, and regardless of their benefits. Workforce participation in Fayette County, though, is noticeably high. And what I'm talking about there is the the folks that are eligible, that that could theoretically go to work. That percentage is high, it's remained consistently a little bit higher than, uh, the surrounding counties, which is a positive thing. You have a lot of activity on the residential development side that should, in theory, uh, ease the employee shortage issue and help with the housing issue. Now, we talked about the price increases you've seen in the housing market. You know, it has new subdivision, you open up that new inventory. Some of that will be people from out of town, and some of it will be people moving around in the community in which case, you know, you then put on the market where they they used to live. So generally, more inventory makes a more competitive, uh, situation. You also have some other projects looking at various other parts of the community. And, uh, we're very happy to be aggressive in that nature. You know, we've talked a lot about, uh, C R A, T I F, and New Community Authority. And that is all things that we are deploying to move this process along as fast as it possibly can. You've had a lot of pleasant investment by Edina, a lot of investment in the healthcare sector in period from a variety of sources, a variety of healthcare providers. And also in the elder care rehabilitation market, so to speak. That has been something that you've seen a lot of investment for, and that generates a fairly diverse set of employment opportunities within the community that we're very happy to see. You also have an expansion of kinda non-traditional therapies or therapies that you don't necessarily need a prescription for. You know, you've seen that pop up in the community, and we're very pleased with that, that that opportunity exists for, uh, folks in Washington courthouse and the employment and the economic activity that it generates. Commercial activity remains solid, it's a bit conservative. But you still have a variety of spaces that exist, uh, for lease, uh, pretty much all over the 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 price board. You have a little bit of moderate investment in in new commercial space, which if you look at our population versus square footage of your commercial space that you have, it's unusually high. That is something that you're gonna continue to, uh, work with, and it goes hand in hand with the industrial side and the housing side. Investment downtown has been proceeding at a pretty decent clip. I know in that transition phase that some things don't look as nice as they could, but you need to think about, oh, activity you've seen, like the the building around the corner from us, about how nice it ends up in the end, and how nice the spaces on the first floor and the second floor apartment over there is incredibly nice. So you got that construction phase, and we all wish that that goes quicker. But that is a a challenge that, you know, people have to work through, and sometimes there's some issues beyond their control that they struggle a little bit with. You know, we're pleased to to hear news that Scotty at the brewery will be moving along. And regardless about how you feel about alcohol, you know, that, um, I think is a positive thing in the sense that it creates something related to foot traffic in the downtown, which is helpful for the entire area and part of the community. When we look at the budget on the cost side, you've seen a lot of inflation, particularly in, uh, consumable goods, things like chemicals for water treatment. We talked about sludge disposal earlier, that you've seen some fairly stiff price increases there over time. Health insurance and property casualty insurance have also escalated considerably. So you make the best estimate you can on that side of it about what you think that they will potentially use and need by department. That process you go through, uh, with me and the the department heads and Ron and the whole operation to try to get a fairly decent estimate about what we we have. Now, Ron pointed out to you earlier that last year's spending was actually about eleven percent under the budgeted amount. And that's because some departments, like police and fire, they operate twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And I can't predict for you, you know, it can give you the average number of fires and the average number of overtime hours that that will generate. But, you know, in any given year, you can have a bad fire, or there'll be an issue that requires more police attention. So that will will vary from year to year a bit, and you don't wanna be in a situation where, you know, courthouse is on fire and I walk down the street to tell them, I'm sorry, but you gotta stop because, you know, you've used up overtime, you know, you folks need to go home, you know, that's not really the option. So you put down enough there within the realm of possibility so that you have a reasonably good handle on your potential expenses. Talk about weather. Downtown, uh, that investment, you know, frequently it's been assisted in a lot of cases or facilitated by organizations like the Community Improvement Corporation, or you have a couple coming up with the revolving loan fund. But overwhelmingly, that's the story of private capital and private sweat. And you really need to express your thanks, uh, to the local entrepreneurs that are willing to go out there and take, in some cases, a considerable risk. You know, that is, it's a, it's a confidence issue, it's an economic calculation, a business calculation, but i- it's a, uh, an emotional commitment also. I mean, that, you know, if we go just across to the corner, Vital Coffee, you know, that is a tremendous investment in that that corner, and, you know, the projections look very good. But no one can guarantee the future, so it's a little bit of stress. And you need to recognize that and acknowledge that and thank people for being willing to do that. The proposed budget for twenty-six is about a five and a half percent increase over the prior year, and about a half percent of that is stuff that is not necessarily reoccurring. Uh, you have some, uh, expenses related to people retiring and retraining replacements, and you got some, uh, expenses that we don't necessarily have to do, but you're investing really in the future of the community and in the infrastructure and economic side of it. Police in any community will typically be the most expensive operation that they endeavor in. In Washington courthouse, police, fire, and municipal court, uh, that is a huge part of the the general fund. And it's two-thirds of Fund one oh one, police and fire. That, you know, is one of our our core functions, and unfortunately, it's expensive. We like to do that well, we like to do that in the best way we can for the community, but it is something that requires resources to do it the way it needs to be done. And we're very thankful that you folks are more than willing to commit the resources that need to be committed to that that safety service function. And in particular, Judge Wolschite at the court, you know, they've done a lot over there on the expense and the the revenue side of it that has benefited tremendously. But there, I want to stress, the issue is the fair and reasonably expedient delivery of the justice process. I mean, that's the the overwhelming goal there. Now, done well, you have a a byproduct of it works a lot better. Now, one thing I wanna stress, a police department and a municipal court, they're not a profit center. Okay, that that is not something that's ever gonna say, well, golly gee, that made a huge impact to the bottom line. Cause both of them, the expenses are gonna far exceed the the income that they generate. A few municipal courts in the state of Ohio, that's different, but there's usually a very specific reason why. If you have a highway patrol post in your backyard, that makes a huge difference. But that, there's usually typically an explanation of why that is performing in that way. Water, you know, you're looking at about expenses of four million dollars to maintain that system and operate it and deliver it. Wastewater, about, oh, five million eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars, somewhere in that. Street, and I wanna stress, in police, in water and sewer, like police and fire and the court, in anything that we do, the most valuable asset we have is really the the people who work for us. In particular, you know, that's very clear in police and fire because you you see them and you interact with them. Well, some folks in the community interact with the police department a lot. But, you know, as a citizen, you tend to see that. And in that area, the expenses are really personnel-driven. Water and wastewater, the people are the most important asset, but the driver of the expenses there are consumable goods and investment in capital infrastructure. It's chemicals, it's, uh, putting pipe in the ground, it's things like energy, both a wastewater treatment plant and a water plant, uh, big consumers of electric. That, so it it's really assets, so to speak, or consumable assets that that drive that. Street, uh, you know, its expenses primarily, uh, not necessarily personnel-driven, but driven by, you know, things you can touch, feel, see, gravel, asphalt, concrete, and so forth. Street does a lot of non-street functions for us, uh, parks, park maintenance, facilities maintenance. Pretty much a lot of things that that don't fit in well anywhere else, uh, Street has always stepped up and helped us with. In that area, that Market Street storm sewer, I wanted to point out to you about two hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And you wanna fix the storm sewer before you repay the street, uh, for fairly obvious reasons. It's generally better to fix what's underneath before you put a new surface on top of it. Next year, you'll have paving for Market Street, Clinton Avenue, Leesburg Avenue. That's a cooperative program with ODOT, those are state routes. Our share of that is about three hundred thousand dollars. It's an excellent deal with ODOT, but it's not necessarily free. They're bearing the the vast majority of the costs there, uh, and we are incredibly appreciative of the assistance that we get from ODOT District Six. But that is something that, you know, involves our resources also. The local paving effort is in addition to that, and that is completely separate because you use that for streets that aren't state routes. And you'll have a level of paving similar to what you did this year. Now, that can change a little bit because you don't know what the price of asphalt's gonna be. You'll bid that out and and see, you know, what we do there, but it's probably gonna be commensurate with what you did or comparable to what you did this year. Water and wastewater, infrastructure investments, approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Stormwater infrastructure could call upon another four hundred thousand dollars. Police and fire, the the non-equipment part of it, non-police cruiser part of it, about a hundred thousand dollars. Now, that doesn't count, oh, like if you bought a fire truck and that fire truck is financed. That is separate from that, that is, uh, oh, turnout gear, that is, uh, hard assets for police and fire, the actual tools that they use. Finally, I wanna recognize the Washington Cemetery. They do an excellent job, quite honestly, with very little. If you look at the scale of the operation, sometimes I think that we forget the physical size of the cemetery. Now, weather can put them in difficult situations. And if there's an issue of, uh, an aesthetic issue that that we need to take care of, you just need to communicate that to us, uh, and we will be happy to go out and take care of that. And occasionally, uh, depending on what else we have going out there, sometimes that that can be a bit of a challenge for us. And, you know, we appreciate the help we get from the public with those type of issues. Sometimes I think people think that they're complaining, and no, there's a standard we're gonna meet out there. And if you have an issue, you need to talk to us. But cemetery, they do a great deal with, not a whole lot. And it's, there's a lot more to it than mowing grass out there. You got, oh, burials, you've got, uh, the maintenance that we do in the older sections where the stones have started to tilt a little bit. It's a lot more complicated than than people think. And I think I've covered pretty much all the departments now. Finance does an excellent job, the ladies of income tax. Now, sometimes they're not citizens don't necessarily look forward to talking with them. citizens don't necessarily look forward to talking with them. But they perform that function incredibly well and incredibly faithfully. And that has been something that has been a tremendous benefit to the general population. With those comments about the budget done, I want to say happy Thanksgiving.
Any questions for Mr. Dillon?
Do we have any updates on the cyber incident?
We put together two sample letters if, for folks that we need to mail out to. They continue to go through that data, they appear to be nearing the end of that process. There's some things that they've transmitted to us that we're taking a look at. The databases appear to still be fine, the issues are when somebody scanned in like a, a document and it's a PDF. So we'll have to, they're identifying those and then we will proceed to send a letter to anybody that, that we need to, and in abundance of caution, you'll probably send it to some folks that don't necessarily need it, but we want to make sure that we notify everybody that we are really need to. So you, you'll probably err on the side of a few more than you necessarily have to.
So we don't know the full extent yet, but we were given and identified with, well, we were presented with information that more personal data was accessed potentially.
And most of that, again, is if a PDF was scanned, but not the databases, not like your, your water account at the water system. But if somebody had like a PDF that they scanned in, like one thing I never really thought about is oh, they'll scan in like a information at the cemetery and that just sits there as a PDF.
That includes sometimes people's social security number and other sensitive information?
Yes.
But we don't know how many people, but this is new information beyond what we knew before.
Yes, they are nearing the end process, we wanted to have the draft letters to go, we supplied those to you. And we'll be proceeding with the notice, ah, notification process forthwith, and you'll get a note, like you have in the mail for any other number of companies, I got one the other day for Prudential.
And that information was given, at least to me, I don't know about the rest of council, but it was given to me tonight.
Yes.
And we were first alerted, you're going to look into it, but you think we, that the city was first alerted to it by the IT people and the insurance company on Friday?
Yes.
And potentially, the insurance company knew about it and withheld it from us between Friday and October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five?
Yeah, they would not have been prepared to conclude who we need to send a notice to, but they, they knew that they had an issue to continue to research.
And they didn't think that we should know about that?
Well, we didn't really, you needed to discern the extent.
I get it, but it's happening more and more frequently.
Yes, it is.
And you created a series of evaluations of people pursuant to your role in the charter?
Yes.
And you ranked our IT person ahead in that rubric, scoring higher than our fire chief? Is that right?
I don't really sit down and look at how they compare to each other.
So I looked at it, was it a, I saw a lot of goods and excellence. Was that on a five-point scale with excellent being top, good being slightly below that? And then I assumed three other unused ones below that, similar to like, I, I scored it all up. And if you're counting an excellent as a five and a good as a four, Alan Johnson got a ninety-one point four, he got an A for this year. And Tim Downing got an eighty-five point seven, he got a B.
Hmm, I don't think of it as A and B. And regardless of I would not have, it would have been difficult to find anybody that would have worked the number of hours that Alan did.
I appreciate the number of hours and the many years of service that Alan has done. I think objectively speaking, this is a bad year for Alan Johnson.
It is.
Can't imagine our fire chief had as bad of a year.
No. And I will look at Chief Downing's evaluation again, but I don't compare them to each other in that respect.
I'm going to continue to be very sensitive about this because there were multiple times this year that I stuck my neck out and my reputation. And I'm not, not saying it's, it's you, Joe, but someone seems like the insurance company keeps getting worse and worse. And when is it going to stop? So that's what I want to know, that's more of a rhetorical question for tonight, but the mistakes have to stop.
Well, we're proceeding through that notice process like we're supposed to. Because we want to give everybody a notice that could have been impacted.
In your frequently asked question draft, on your fourth page, you have it, press for additional information. I'm sorry, but I've given you all the information I have at this time, and we'll need to have a spokesperson follow-up.
That is a suggestion from the insurance company. I don't particularly care for that one.
Have we allocated for our communications director and our budget that you presented this year?
You did not.
All right. No further questions.
Anything else? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Sockman?
Well, I'm just going to talk real quick what we talked about there in the finance veneer, about our GAAP. And just so we can kind of let everybody know what the difference is, the GAAP, it provides an independent assurance that financial statements are accurate and fairly presented. It covers all of our financial statements, internal controls, and compliance with accounting standards. This is also done by independent CPA outside. So, and this is the one that we have for this year. And just real quick, some of the highlights. Our net position growth increased three percent to three point, thirty-eight point one million. That's signaling an improved financial health. Income tax collections were up, exceeded the budget by a million. Investment surge, up a hundred and eighty-three percent. Our capital asset growth was one point seven million increase from infrastructure and equipment investments. Operating expenses rose one point two million, a little high. And water fun losses, five hundred and three thousand, that's on the negative side. Although the wastewater treatment plant was four hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss last year, they bounced back this year with six hundred and five thousand dollar gain. So overall, pretty good year for us. So that's all I got. I will say also, with our budget this year, or in twenty twenty-four, our general fund outpaced our budget by close to a million dollars, nine hundred and seven thousand. Unrestricted free money, so that was, again, that just shows our, our financial health is in good shape, so that's it.
Questions?
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Pitts, did?
Mr. Chairman, I have no report, just happy Thanksgiving.
There you go.
Okay, we have no local residents or taxpayers signed up, so let's move on to legislation. There's quite a bit. First, that is, that has been previously introduced, starting with ordinance number sixteen, twenty twenty-five, third reading.
I'll move, we put ordinance sixteen, twenty twenty-five on third reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number sixteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, determining that a petition to establish the Washington Courthouse New Community Authority District is sufficient and complies with the requirements of section three four nine point zero three of the Ohio Revised Code in form and substance, setting the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice of publication of such hearing.
Move for passage.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-six, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I move, we put resolution R forty-six, twenty twenty-five on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R forty-six dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mr. Scott Donmeyer to the City Planning Commission Board of the City of Washington Courthouse for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Move for adoption.
Second. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Next is resolution number R fifty-three, twenty twenty-five. We had already approved this for the second reading, but we, because of all that mess up that day, we didn't adopt it, so this is just the adoption.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could, the only adoption of this one, it should be Dela Kestner key, not Ron DeTyr. So I want to make sure that that's, when I read it, you guys understand, I have Ron DeTyr, but it should be Dela Kestner key.
Okay, has everybody heard, did everybody hear that?
What was it?
Should be Dela Kestner key?
Oh.
When I read this.
Oh, the name should be changed.
Yeah, because of all of that, and then it changes and, yes.
Okay. Now, does someone want to make a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number R fifty-three, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
And, oh, roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fifty-three dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Mr. Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Mrs. Dela Kestner key to the Community Authority Housing Board for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-nine.
Okay. Resolution number R fifty-four, twenty twenty-five, second reading.
I'll move, we put resolution R fifty-four, twenty twenty-five on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Resolution number R fifty-four dash two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, City Manager of the City of Washington Courthouse, appointment of Bob Kendrick to the Fayette Metropolitan Housing Authority for a term concluding on December thirty-first, two thousand and thirty.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Okay, Jim and Kayla. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Next, we have new legislation, starting with ordinance number seventeen, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I move, we put ordinance seventeen, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if there's a lot to read, I didn't get through everything, but I, I was curious how they're going to appoint the board members for this particular community authority we're creating.
We did discuss that earlier.
That was discussed in committee, but if you want to, yeah.
Jim, we talked about that extensively in committee and we specifically started with a piece of public property. So where it says developer, that is city, although the developer is doing all the things that a developer normally does. We're not taking on any street construction or anything of that nature. So that would be the city, and then we talked about basically that those four slots, the three developer and the one local government liaison, or however that's labeled. And then you have three community, which those three for the, you're talking about something, a community that does not necessarily exist at this point in time. So the suggestion was there was that you talk with both school districts and also that we talk with Whitney Gentry because of her unique experience, having been the chamber president and also a school board member in the past. The city or developer slots. Mark has talked with me, Ron has talked with me, and they really think that, that initially in the setup phase, that that ought to be me, Mark, Ron, and Chelsea. So that we get this thing put together and operating the way it will, because it will, new community authority revenues will get paid in just like property taxes do.
So Gentry, does she live in the city?
You don't have to live in the city in this case.
Why wouldn't we want somebody from the city?
Well, she's always been involved in the community and has been in particular involved with the Chamber of Commerce and a prior school board member of the school district that, uh, might be traced if my recollection is correct. She does have some unique experience there, but it could be someone else, but it doesn't necessarily have to come from inside the corporate limits of the City of Washington Courthouse. Okay, it's all the questions I have.
I understand. Any others? Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
No.
Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number seventeen dash two thousand and twenty-five, determining that the establishment of the Washington Courthouse New Community Authority will be conducive to the public safety, convenience, and welfare, and is intended to result in the development of a new community and declaring the new community authority to be organized in a body of politi- politic, sorry, politi- I don't know if I said it right.
I couldn't say it either, so.
Yeah, incorporate and defining the boundaries of the new community district, appointing, appointing board members and approving related matters.
Ordinance number eighteen, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move, we put ordinance eighteen, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Is it too late to ask a question, Mr. Chairman?
Technically, probably, but go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious why J L B one is the only entity that's mentioned in this ordinance.
Because that's the first set, and then you'll do Bryant's next.
So it'll be a separate?
Yeah. Or maybe it's a separate? Yeah, you go through the whole ritual again with Bryant property.
Okay.
It's just because, you know, one of their development is further along, so you'll take care of J L B's properties first and, and take care of that, get that crossed off the list, and then you move on to Bryant, and you'll go through exactly the same process with Bryant.
Okay, so it's specific for J L B one, okay. That's, that's my question.
That's okay. Wherever we are.
We need Blair's.
Oh, we need your yes or no? Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you, that's okay. Christman?
Yes.
Hawke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance establishing three incentive districts- Ordinance number eighteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance establishing three incentive districts and declaring improvements to certain real property within the incentive districts to be public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, identifying certain public infrastructure improvements made to be made or in the process of being made that will benefit or serve the parcels in the incentive districts, requiring the owners of those parcels to make service payments and leave taxes. Establishing municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund for the dis- deposit of such service payments and approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a tax increment financing agreement with J L B one Properties LTD and other agreements and approving related matters.
Ordinance number nineteen, twenty twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance nineteen, twenty twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Lip stain.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number nineteen dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Ordinance number twenty, twenty, twenty-five, first reading.
I'll move we put ordinance twenty, twenty-five on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Lip stain.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number twenty dash two thousand and twenty-five, amending ordinance number thirty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four by providing supplemental appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Washington Courthouse, Fayette County, Ohio during fiscal year ending December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Kelly.
You're welcome, sir.
Uh, Mr. Johnson, what do you have this evening?
Well, um. I don't think we were able to have the results last time we met, but congratulations, Mr. Chairman, on your, uh.
Massive victory.
It's all a matter of perspective. Um, and, and to Councilmember Hawk, um. I'm, I'm deeply saddened. Uh, I've loved serving with you. You've always been just a kind, wonderful, God-fearing man. And. I know that you've gotten a lot of flack over the years for some of your positions, a lot of them involving alcohol. Um. Despite all, yeah, that doesn't matter to me, it never did. It never did matter to me. Um, cause I always knew, no matter what you did, Mr. Hawk. You did it because you love this city, because you loved doing what you do. And. Well, I'm, I'm gonna miss you, Mr. Hawk. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Blair.
I'd like to wish a happy Thanksgiving to the community and to all my fellow members. And thank you all for coming, you in the gallery there. Appreciate that. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz.
Well, we'd like to offer our condolences to the Mr. J T Moore's family that is quite lost all of a sudden like that. That's extremely difficult. Uh, so I hope they get through that and right here at this time of the year also, it makes it even more difficult. Um, again, I said to Ted and I said to Dale, I said that, uh, I told Ted the other day. Dale winning by one point is a win for the city and the citizens of Washington Courthouse. But also in the same breath, the loss of Mr. Hawk off of this. This, with the city council is a great loss to the city and the cities, citizens of Washington Courthouse. It's, uh, a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience is leaving us. And that is, uh, that's very difficult sometimes. But, um, we're looking forward to the new years that, that are coming up. As you can see by all the readings and all the questions we have, there's a lot of legislation that's coming up and it's going to take a lot of thinking, what to do about this, what to do about that. So these are challenges that I think the city council has to be aware of and we have to be prepared for. And there's, um, things I, I, I know the cyber thing is very difficult. There's still a lot of questions for that. Um, I think blaming Mr. Johnson, Alan Johnson, for anything, I think is unfair. Uh, he never dealt with a cyber attack before. Uh, I think he did a fantastic job and I think he continues doing a fantastic job. Uh, and anybody that says he's not, well, they're, they don't know the gentleman and how much time he puts in and dedication to his job. So I think those things we have to stop and, uh, take a step backward and see where we're at as a city. We're getting through this, it's difficult and it's always will be difficult if you have these kind of things come up. It's how you approach these things which makes you a stronger person. So you have to look at things with an open mind and how we have to approach them and, uh, move forward from this position. And we learned a lot as a city and as the, uh, city council, we learned a lot from this experience. So I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, be thankful, every, we all, like Mr. Blair said, we all have something to be thankful for. And, uh, so we all have to be very thankful. So thank you all for coming and have a very nice Thanksgiving. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hawk.
Well, uh, not being on here is, is stings. Uh, cause I have enjoyed it, I, you've been a good group to work with. But I am still alive and I got good health, I'm not dead like some people are. So I'm, I'm blessed and losing by one vote to Mr. Lynch is, uh, that's, that's an honor to be that close.
Yes, that's a good one.
And, and, uh, so I've appreciated being here now. I plan to be a little like the little chihuahua nipping at everybody's heels. So, uh, I might be sitting back there with the Kester, Kesturkey? Kester, Kesturkey?
Kester Turkey!
Kester Key. I, I try to, I try to put you that name every chance I get. Anyway.
That's a good one.
I plan to be around for a while and, um, uh. I, I was gonna live to a hundred and six, but I think I'm gonna make it a hundred and twenty now.
Yeah, I think you'll make it.
So anyway, uh, it is, of course it is, we've still got two more meetings, but it's, it's been a privilege working with everybody and plan to continue at least till the end of the year and, uh. It, it's been really a great privilege to be in this number. And, uh, I, I do appreciate that, the opportunity that I've had. And, uh. Also, don't forget the seventh is also, I, is that our Christmas parade that we have? But it's also Per Harbor Day.
Yeah, Per Harbor Day.
Let's not let that sneak up on us and let's remember that date. And, uh.
Yeah.
It, cause a lot of people paid a price for us to be in the situation we're in. And, uh, I hope we, we continue to, to fight, to maintain what has been bought for us with blood and tears and so. I guess that's all, thank you.
Mr. Chris.
Well, Ted, I'm gonna miss you, I don't have anybody to pick on after your call. Uh, also, Mr. Moore's mother is in my office this afternoon. Uh, she's really hurting. I am going to send her a sympathy card and I, maybe some of the other folks would like to, that's up to you, but. Anyway, she's a nice lady and she is suffering, so. That's all I have. Oh, thanks for coming, people.
Um, I guess I could say a lot of things, but I probably shouldn't. I am very thankful, always have been for this community, for all that it's done for me and my family. And that goes clear down through all of my grandkids who were also grew up here. Um, for two weeks, I was hurt. Then all of a sudden, I wasn't. Strangest feeling, Ted. So I do feel for you, I really do. I will say, at least you didn't have to have all the nasty things said about you on Record Herald, Fayette County chat uncensored.
What a mess.
Can I tell you, that is one of the worst things in the history. People can say what they want to say. But that's what's wrong with politics today. My granddaughters came to my defense, but my granddaughter shouldn't have to come to my defense. I'm not, I don't even know who that person was. Anyway. I heard a saying a while back that says, when you're in a leadership role, people only see the decision you make. They don't see why you made the decision. And furthermore, they don't care. Did you make a decision that I like or did you make a decision that I don't like? They don't look into how decisions are made. And when you're doing evaluations, unless I sat down and talked with Mr. Denon for a long time about why did you evaluate this person this way? And why did you evaluate this person this way? And there's about twenty different things on there. I don't know. But I think he had things to look at. I don't know of anybody who worked harder to get all the things solved that were caused by the cyber attack than Alan Johnson. I don't think he was the cause of it. But I do think he's one of the reasons, even though it lasted a long time, that we basically got through it. And I've said this a hundred times. We may not, as a city, he may not, Joe may not, we, all of us may not have as, as a city, done the best things we could do in every situation there. You learn, if it happens again and we did the same things, you could complain. I hope we have learned how to better do things from that. Anytime somebody, any organization, business, whatever, has a cyber attack, if it's the first time, it's a learning process. Was the insurance company great at it? I don't know. I don't know. Anyway. Ted, I. I don't know. I, I feel bad.
Appreciate it.
We've talked a lot since that Tuesday. Anyway. Someone want to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Uh, roll call.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Hawk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes, we are adjourned.
Adjourned.